Good morning, everyone. We're going to bring the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health to order. Today is Thursday, September 21st, 2017. It is 8:30 a.m. We're in the Sierra Room at the Community Center in Arvario on Carson City. Sue Meriwether, could we please get a roll call, formal roll call for the record, please? The record will reflect that Supervisor Bonkowski is excused.
Good morning Supervisor.
Here?
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Is excused.
Supervisor Bagwa?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Mayor Crowe?
Here. Thank you Sue very much. Okay, Nick, I see you back there. Could you get us started today? Get us started on a good, put us on a good foot here.
Father God, we thank you for today, this day that you've given us. May we make the best of it. May we make good choices. May we make choices that honor you and honor one another. God, give these leaders of our community wisdom. And we pray for the protection of our city. That God, from all those who work throughout the city, whatever they do, God, that you would keep them safe on the streets, in the offices, and wherever they might be. And that you would help them do exactly what they need to do this day, and this week, and this month, we pray. In your most holy name. Amen.
That was well said, Nick. You did that out of note, son.
I practice in the shower.
So I call him the good Colonel Murano, our city manager, to be just as pleasantly as he is.
To declare the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Thank you, Nick. All right, we're going to move on to public comment, item number five. This is the time to comment and discuss on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. And we also take public comment where appropriate generally on each individual item as we go through the agenda. And we'll have public comment at the end. And there'll be public comment during the Board of Health as well. Anybody? Anybody want to say anything? Come on up. Come on. Good morning. Nice brisk morning this morning here. Right there. Have a, either stand up or have a seat. Probably have a seat and push the, push the little button in front there. There you go.
Well, first a positive thing. I'd like to say that I appreciate the open spaces people. My dog and I walk the north bike path. And every once in a while, find graffiti out there. Typically, if I call them, the next day it's gone. So I gotta say, I really think they're doing a great job. Now, the thing that, that's negative is I live on Pine Lane. And like to find out how it go about, or how the street goes about mitigating a traffic problem that has kind of built up. Pine Lane is used as an expressway between Roop and either College or North Carson Street. The, I've lived there about five years now, maybe a little over five years. And the, the volume of traffic has just increased. People have been finding that that's a good way to get across there. They don't have to go to the light at Roop and College. As a matter of fact, a lot of the people and some of the delivery trucks will actually cut through the, there's a service station, a quick stop at the corner of Hot Springs. And they will cut straight across that parking lot, won't stop at Hot Springs, and they'll rip down Pine Lane in order to, to get across there as fast as possible. And it's, the, the speed is increasing. The other night, watched three trucks go by. They had to been doing 50 miles an hour. And, and it was just boom, 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 they went by. And, and the traffic noise, of course, because of the volume of traffic, is increasing. It's, it's just getting worse and worse. You, you can tell people, a lot of people are using their GPS to, to figure out how to get across town. You can tell the people where their GPS has told them to go down that street, they'll get to, I'm right on kind of the corner where it turns. And they'll stop because they're not sure if the GPS lied to them. So they'll stop and they'll peek around the corner. And then when they see they can go on, they, they go on. And so, it's just, every year, it, it increases and the speed increases. Most of the people that live on the street are retired, although we're starting to get some younger families. And the kids are, you know, running across the street. And there's dogs running across the street. Just recently, now, up until this year, I really haven't seen many wild animals. But this year, a lot of deer now are starting to go across the street. And with the cars running around there, there's going to be, well, actually, one time, somebody was coming from the one direction and was cutting the corner. And the other person was traveling at a high rate of speed and going to go around the corner. They actually had to cross on the opposite sides of the street in order not to have an accident. So it, it would be nice if somehow we could do something to.
There are various things, I think, you know, that can be done. I'm not an expert in, in all of them, but I know we've got the sheriff here and I, you know, it's up, it's up to Kenny, but we might want to have, you know, a little bit more visibility on, on Pine. That might help. Or, you know, there are other things, and I, I don't see the RTC folks here, but we'll pay. Oh, Lucia's here. Okay.
Transportation manager.
Transportation. Sir. Good morning. Want to talk about this one?
My name is William Hopp. H-O-P-P.
Hang on, William. We got the boss here of transportation sitting right next to you, Lucia Maloney.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Lucia Maloney for the record. We can, we can look into doing a speed study on that street, and I'll give you my card, and we can, we can look into that for you.
I think you're on the right track. That's how you ring the bell. Not certain, not certain how it ends up, but the, the bell is definitely rung. Let's see where it goes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Public comment time. Anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay. So we take public comment as we go through. Let's then take up item 60, approval of minutes of October, possible approval of minutes of October, of August 7th, excuse me, 2017, August 17th, 2017. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion to order.
I move to approve the minutes of August 17th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. See if this works.
I don't have a voting screen.
I don't have a voting screen either.
I had to go into it to get.
Well, you know, we did that on purpose.
I had it on.
Here it goes. Now I got a voting screen. All right.
It's on public comment. It didn't, it's a wrong item.
Yeah, okay.
So it's on our public comment.
Hang on a minute. We're doing some electronic, you know, little challenge here, okay. Kathy, when you.
Now it's on item six. You could hit.
Right.
See if she can pop it up for us now. Yeah, it was stuck on five. I thought we were voting on public comment.
I'll catch that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get our electronic voting going here, so just, just hang on with us. In the meantime, I think that motion passed, so let's move on to, I don't think, I know the motion passed, so the minutes of August 17th, 2017 will be approved. On the adoption of the agenda, board members, we have one that will be pulled, that's the Lompah Ranch issue, that was for this afternoon. They need to pull that to have further discussion. Anything else from the board? Anybody?
No other change.
No change, okay. With the exception of the Lompah Ranch matter, then, we will take the agenda on both the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Health as published. Let's take up item number eight, and let's ask, on special presentations, and ask our board, let's all go down there, and then we'll also have a walk to school today. Okay? Come on. All right. Where's Melanie?
Right here.
Okay, all right. Let me call up Sean Palomar. Sean, who's with you there? Have her come on up. Come on, both of you. What's your name?
Sarah.
Say it again.
Sarah.
Sarah. Well, I think, you know, it's important to have both of you up here because you have to put up with what he has to go through every day. And Sean, I want to say, on behalf of a grateful community, we want to thank you and Sarah for, for what you do to make Carson City a better place to live, work, and play. And I know it takes, you know, I wanted the family to come up here because it takes a family to support, to support our law enforcement officers. And it's a real nice deal. So, again, on behalf of all of us, for 10 years of service, thank you very much. Okay? Come on up here, and we'll get a picture. Here, Sean? There you go. I was going to take that. I'm going to give it to Sarah. Come on, get in the middle there. All right, we'll get a picture here. We'll go back up here, and then we'll, Courtney, you ready?
Oh. Going back up or staying?
I think, you need us down here, or you want to talk from there?
On a picture?
Let's do it. We'll stay, we're down here.
On a picture? She likes pictures.
Come on up here. We'll get right over here. Come on. This is a proclamation for Walk to School Day, October 4th, 2017. How many people have walked to school? Uh-huh. See that? All right. You know, I had to walk to school in the snow, and I went uphill.
Yeah.
And both ways. That was pretty tough, you know, but I, but I weathered through it. Okay. So this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas walking to school instead of traveling by car reduces the amount of traffic around schools and improves safety and air quality around schools. And whereas physical activity, like walking, plays a leading role in reducing obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking to school together with parents and caregivers creates opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian safety. And whereas walking is a sustainable mode of transportation that supports health and the environment and creates connected communities, and that's really important. And whereas adequate physical activity has been shown to lead to improvement in children's academic achievement. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk to, to, to walk to school on Walk to School Day, October 4th, 2017. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, do hereby proclaim on behalf of our community and our Board of Supervisors, that Wednesday, October 4th, is Walk to School Day in Carson City, and encourage all of our citizens to be active and to walk with children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. And Courtney, I know you do a wonderful job in, in getting people to come do these things. And I know our board members have, have done that. And if anybody wants to, to do it, I'll tell you, it's a lot of fun, walking with, with the kids to school. I mean, I kid about it, but it is, you know, it's a reminder of, for some of us who are getting older, you know, it's a reminder of, of, you know, that life is, life moves on, and it's fun. So why don't you talk to us a little bit about it there? All right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our fifth Walk to School Day here in Carson City. We are very excited to be taking part. We have 22 schools across the region. Our program, the Safe Routes to School program, is regional, so it also includes Carson City and Douglas, Lyon, and Story Counties. So we have 22 schools that are going to be participating in Walk to School Day this year. And we're so thrilled that the community has really embraced this program, and that the kids are, are becoming more and more aware of what it means to live in a walkable, bikeable community. So we want to thank all of you for, for supporting it, and, and please look out for the kids walking on October 4th.
And every day.
And every day.
All right, all right. Oh, we got a picture. Hold on. Any member of the board want anything pulled off the consent agenda for particular discussion? I don't see any member of the public want anything pulled off the consent agenda for individual discussion. I don't see any then, or motions in order to approve the consent agenda as published. Motion by Supervisor Bagwa.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published on the agenda.
Motion and a second. Let's see where this goes here. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Thank you. Okay, let's take up then, item number 13. This is possible action to discuss and possibly order and direct the Carson City Treasurer, we're not really ordering and directing, but sort of we are, to sell after giving notice of sale for a total amount not less than the amount of taxes and costs for legally, that have been assessed against individual pieces of property in the state, in this city. So, Gail, you want to take us through this? We do this periodically.
This is one of the first steps that we take going forward to sell, possibly sell properties. These are parcels where the taxes for the fiscal year 2014, 2015 have not been paid. They had, after those taxes became due in March of 2015, they had a two-year redemption period. And so now we're, we have these parcels where the, they have not paid the taxes.
Gail, what's going on with, there's one parcel where the, the delinquent amount is almost $24,000. Do you know what's going on with that one?
The owner of that property is out of state. I believe she's in Florida at this point. There's a man living in the home, and he apparently has some sort of deed of trust on that property. He did call the office last week. So we're expecting him to pay the taxes so that he will protect his position with that deed of trust.
Okay. So in other, in other words, you need to move forward here so that you can get paid. Okay? All right?
Yeah, it's, it's a really nice home over in the Silver Oak area.
That's what I thought, yeah. I looked at it. Okay. Board members, anything? Public comment, anybody? I don't see any motions in order.
I move to order and direct the Carson City Treasurer to sell after giving notice of sale for a total amount not, not less than the amount of taxes, costs, penalties, and interest legally chargeable against the property as stated on the attached list of properties.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Thank you. All right. Let's take up the investment policy, Gail. Any changes on this one? On the investment policy, or, I mean, sometimes it's a pretty good idea, give us your rundown on what you're, what you're doing here. That's fine, if you want to do that.
Well, first, we're having a public hearing on the policy, but the only change from last year is last year Supervisor Bonkowski directed that we remove anything that had to do with securities lending or purchase agreements. So the policy has been revised to take all of that out. Other than that, no changes.
All right, well, this is a public hearing, time for public hearing. Anybody want to comment on the investment policy? Anybody? Board members? I think we're pretty, we've been through it, so, all right, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll take a motion.
I'm the next item. Just the motion.
If you could move to the next item.
Okay, next item. All right. Next item. Let's go to the city policy for investment and surplus money. Gail?
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
I move to approve and adopt the Carson City Treasurer's proposed city policy for the investment of surplus money.
Second.
Motion and a second on a motion discussion.
Just slightly on discussion.
Go.
I, I want to thank you for providing me the data I requested, because when I looked at the policy, you can see the term lights that we can invest the money, but I kind of wanted to know, wow, are we going out that far and putting our money out 10 years, or we're not? For the average, two to three years. So I just wanted to kind of state that. So thank you though for responding and doing such a great job.
May I piggyback on that?
Cool.
And it's a good policy at this time to be a shorter term. So, good move.
So you don't have too much confidence in the future?
No, it's not that, but.
I'm kidding.
Wherever interest rates go, you know, you want to be shorter term when they're going up, if they're going up.
I got you. Okay. On the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. All right. Carried. Okay. Thank you, Gail, very much. Okay. All right, let's take up purchasing contracts, item 14. This is impact construction on the Riverview Park Trail Repair Project. Go. Laura, you give us your top line. Okay?
All right, good morning. This is to approve contract 1718-065, the Riverview Park Trail Repair Project to impact construction for bid amount of $183,781, with a contingency of $18,378, for a total not to exceed amount of $202,159, to be funded from the insurance fund as a result of the January 2017 flood event.
Okay. City engineer?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Supervisors. Dan Stuckey, City Engineer, for the record. So I'll give a little background on kind of how this project came to be, and kind of a little background on how we've been dealing with FEMA. There's been about 300 projects, or I guess locations throughout the city that we went out with FEMA and did damage assessments on. Of those 300 projects, we've consolidated into about 47 projects that we've identified with FEMA. This is one of the major, we've, we've constructed to date nine of those 47. This will be the 10th. And this is one of the more major projects, the, the Riverview Trail System. This project in particular focuses on, you know, areas where the trail was washed out during the January 2017 flood event. So the project will repair those sections of the trail and also provide some mitigation measures for future erosion control on some of the trailhead. We'll be armoring with some riprap, some rock. I believe that's about it. This is Phase One of a multi-phase. When this project went out to bed, some parts of the river was, were still underwater. And there's also some coordinating issues on the areas closer to the river where we have to coordinate with state lands and the Army Corps of Engineers. So there will be a future phase to this trail system.
Okay. I know Supervisor, but I was a comment or a question here. I got a note yesterday from a constituent talking about the trail that starts at Empire, the Empire Maintenance Shed, and ends up near Morgan Mill. Is that, is this part of that?
It is not. That, that trailhead has been identified to actually be completed in the spring. So that's where we're at with our planning. Another thing I wanted to point out, too, that I forgot to mention earlier, is we did receive notification from FEMA, I believe last, the end of last week, that due to the multiple hurricanes, Irma and Harvey, that they've been receiving, they're kind of put a, they put a freeze on funds that they're going to be awarding grants, just because they're trying to wrap their head around all the damages that have, of the result of those hurricanes. So at this moment, we've, we've received, of those 47 projects that I mentioned earlier, we've received grant awards for 20 of those. There's still 27 that we have not received yet, and there's a 90-day freeze. So at this point, it could just delay receiving those awards until they figure out things on their end. It's a 90-day period that they're freezing. So just for your information on that.
I hope it's just a 90-day freeze. I mean, because without that, we're going to be having, we're going to be strapped to complete 47 projects out there. Big, it's a big deal. Okay. All right, board members? Yeah?
Yeah, answer my question.
Yeah. Hang on a minute. We'll do, public comment, anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay, motion's in order. Supervisor Bagwa.
Okay. I move to determine that impact construction is the lowest responsive bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338, and to award contract number 1718-065, Riverview Park Trail Repair Project to impact construction for a bid amount of $183,781, plus a contingency amount of $18,378, for a total not to exceed $202,159, to be funded from the insurance fund for the January 2017 flood event account, as provided in the fiscal year 1718 budget.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying or punching aye. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's take up item 17. This is on second reading, to amend Title IV. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Laura. All right. Chapter, Chapter 4.05.
Skip in 15.
No, it's 15, it's frustrating.
15.
15? I missed it.
Yes. Missed a page. Probably have two pages together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to do 15.
All right, 15. You're right. Sorry, folks.
Just two pages.
All right. I picked up two pages there. I was moving too fast.
We're good.
We're good. I was looking, I said, how come we got, you know, we're going to end up this quick? All right, let's go on first reading, item 15 Alpha. This is for the $6 million general obligation, limited tax sewer bonds. Who do we have here today?
Good, good morning. John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group, financial advisor to the city. And sitting next to me is Ryan Henry, Chairman and Howard Bond Counsel to the city. Nancy, do you want me to kick this off, or do you want to? Okay. In front of you is, is a bond ordinance, first reading for the proposed $6 million sewer bonds. This has been before the board a couple of times already. This is for projects essentially for completion of the wastewater treatment plant here in Carson, as well as some other capital projects in the sewer fund. The bonds are general obligations of the city, but they are secured by the revenues of the sewer fund. We expect those revenues to be self-supporting based on the rates that have been approved by the board. And so we are looking today for introduction and to answer any questions in terms of the bonds. To maybe give you a little bit of update on timing, our plan is to sell the bond to the State of Nevada Bond Bank. It's a program that they run that essentially extends the state's credit rating to Carson City. It's a total pass-through. So we get better interest rates on the bonds than if we were to do it ourselves. We anticipate that by going through the state bond bank, that it'll save the city about $100,000 in terms of net proceeds, and, and also debt service savings. So we think it's a really good deal, and definitely appreciate the state for being willing to do that for us. The state is looking to price their bonds about the middle of, of next month, in October. Be shortly after we bring this back for, excuse me, for adoption at the October 5th meeting, I believe it is. And, and then close by the beginning of November. And that will be the point where we have the money in the bank and ready for construction, but we would lock in the rates about mid-October. And in terms of interest rates right now, they, they've still been pretty good. There was a, an FOMC meeting yesterday where it was announced that they were going to start, you know, rolling assets off their balance sheet, which has been widely expected. You know, there's been some reaction in terms, in the market. Interest rates are up a little bit this week, but they, they were down. They were down, I think, more than really they should have been. So I think they're coming back to more normal level, but we'll keep an eye on it as, as things move forward. keep an eye on it as, as things move forward. But right now, we're expecting that an all-in financing rate of, of less than 3% over our 20-year repayment period.
Pretty good, pretty good. Good move on going through the state, too, that's good, all right. Public comment, anybody? Board? We've talked about this quite a bit, so motions in order.
Bill number?
1, 2, 3.
I move to introduce on first reading, bill number 1, 2, 3, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of Carson City, Nevada, providing for the issuance of a general obligation limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues, Series 2017B, and the maximum principal amount of $6 million, and providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof, and covenants relating to the payment of said bonds.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Okay, thank you, folks, all right. Let's now take up hospital revenue bonds. Who's going to do that one? This is 15 Bravo, where we're being asked to essentially pass through bonds for the Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Corporation. Go.
Good morning, John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group, for the record. This is a request by the Carson Tahoe, Carson Tahoe Hospital, for the city to act as a conduit issuer on its behalf. This, this allows Carson Tahoe to issue tax-exempt bonds, because the city can do that, Carson Tahoe cannot do it on its own. So, this is a service that we provide to the hospital, and really what this resolution is doing is, is to set a hearing that's required under federal and, and state law for the bonds to be issued, it's called a TEFRA hearing, and that, that hearing would be on October 19th, that would be the, the board meeting about a month from now. But the, the projects that, that we're looking at here, and I don't know if there's anyone from the hospital that could talk, I guess not, more to the projects, one, one of the projects is to refinance some existing bonds, they, they did bonds back in 2003 and 2005 that they would refinance, so that, that is one of the projects, and the, and the other bond that's proposed is, is for a new, what we call new money, similar to what we just did for the sewer bonds for construction of additional facilities here in Carson City. And, you know, I, I think when we bring the, the bond resolution, we have that public hearing on October 19th, we can definitely make sure that the hospital's here to give us some more detail on exactly what it is that they are going to be building. But right now, this is just a first step, all this does is set the, set the hearing date, and then at that point, when we get to the hearing, we'll, we'll have more detail on the projects.
Yeah, and these, these bonds, there's no liability to the city, correct?
John Peterson with J&amp;A Consulting Group. That's correct, and Ryan, I think, may be able to go into a little bit more detail if we need to, but the city's acting as a conduit issuer here. There is an agreement that will be signed between the hospital and Carson City, essentially indemnifying the city. In terms of financial risk, these bonds are repaid from hospital revenues, there's, there's no claim upon any city revenues of any kind.
And no claim on city bond debt limits?
No, it, it has no claim on, on city bond, on city bond debt limits, they're revenue bonds, so they don't count against the, the GO limit of the city. If you were to ask me if there's any risk to this transaction, the only thing I would say would be headline risk, if for some reason we issued these bonds and, and the hospital defaulted, you know, I would say Carson City on, on, on the cover of it, so that, that would be the only risk. Don't believe at this time that that, you know, that, that's going to happen, and we will definitely have a report on the 19th of October to basically state that, to have some more detail on, on why we believe that this is a safe thing for the city to do.
Yeah, and we've, we've done this in the past, and, you know, it's part of being a good cooperative citizen in, in Carson City, so, public comment? Anybody? Board, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd just like to have more, when that time comes, more on what's going on with the hospital, so, hope you can get them here.
Absolutely, we'll, we'll make sure that we have someone from the hospital there at, at the next meeting.
Okay, well, let's set the, let's see if we can get the motion on to adopt a resolution setting a hearing. Somebody want to do?
Resolution number?
2017 R.33.
I move to adopt resolution number 2017 R.33, a resolution authorizing a public hearing on the issuance of hospital revenue bonds and hospital revenue refunding bonds for, and a preliminary agreement with Carson Tahoe Regional Healthcare Corporation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, thank you, all right. Let's take up Parks and Rec. We'll take up item 16 Alpha. This is a discussion to possibly accept $261,657, which is our required match from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, for the design and construction of a universally accessible playground and site improvements at Roscoe Park. Morning, Jennifer, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, good. So, on that question about, I sent you a note last night, on the question about the trail out there from, on Empire, that, we can tell folks that that's scheduled for spring, is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director, I did respond to your email this morning, and as the city engineer said, it would be anticipated to be completed by spring, depending on how wet the winter is, we're going to try to get some of the work done this winter.
Okay.
So, it's, it's hard to move dirt, though, and, and do erosion control in the winter if we have a lot of snow or any flooding, so.
Okay.
I just want to have that, add that cautionary tale.
Yeah, I got you, okay. Roscoe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Board of Supervisors, today, if you approve this item, it will accept a $261,657 grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's a program that's federally funded through the National Park Service, locally through the Nevada State Parks, so they're the local fiscal agent that we work directly with. This is a really great program, we've received a lot of funding throughout the years, millions of dollars since 1965, so a program that we hope continues to get funded in the next fiscal budget for the federal system. This would remove and replace our play equipment at Roscoe Park, it's aging infrastructure that is in desperate need of improvement. Our new policy, moving forward, as we replace these old playgrounds or end systems, is to include some universally accessible components, so we have, all ages and abilities are able to use and enjoy this playground. This would include rubberized surfacing, ADA parking, and ADA access improvements as part of the project. The matching funds, which is also $261,000, so it's a one-to-one match that's required from the city, but no more than 50% of the total project cost comes from residential construction tax that you've previously authorized, as well as a CDBG grant that we're just waiting on our notice to proceed in the paperwork, so as soon as we get that and bring that back to the board and get that going, we can start design and construction of that project.
Run that last part by me again, please. CD, CDBG?
Yes, so, we were verbally approved for around $91,000 for community development block grant funds toward this project. We haven't received the written formal agreement for that, so as soon as we receive that, take that to the board, we can start design for this project.
All right, we got a couple questions. Supervisor Bagwell, and Supervisor Bagwell, well?
Hi, Jen. Question, on the rendering that we have of the park, and I know when we had originally talked about this, what was going to be accomplished was dependent on how much funding you got, so with this, how much of that park will be accomplished in terms of what we were originally presented?
The footprint of the play structure would be a tiny bit smaller, because we didn't receive the entire CDBG award, but not a significant amount.
So, Jennifer, I would like for you, just so that it's clear on the record for everyone, and we're completely transparent, that you discuss the condition in the grant, that it's, it's like a deed trust, and I just think it's imperative that people understand when we accept this grant, the responsibility that will come with it, so if we can just put that on the record, thank you.
That's a, a great question, Supervisor Bagwell, I know we had previously discussed this, so part of the requirement for land and water conservation funds is basically a restrictive covenant on the land when you use these funds, so it's to protect these facilities for outdoor recreational purposes. This park had previously had land and water on it, so it already sort of has that implied restrictive covenant, but they're a little bit more stringent on that now, and they like you to actually record something. It's not in perpetuity, it is for 25 years, which is typically the life of a project, depending on what that is, I think that's sort of a round number that they just assign it to, it's not project-based, but, so we preserve these, you know, facilities and lands for recreation use. A lot of our lands, our park system, have restrictive covenants or deed restrictions in one form and of another, so it's very typical, but it is something that we are agreeing to as part of accepting this grant. Does that mean if we needed that facility for something that was essential to the life, health, and community of the public, of course, we, we would have an opportunity to do that, and we would have to work with the National Park Service to implement that. I know Supervisor Bagwell gave an example of if we needed this site for flood mitigation, or there was some imminent health risk in the community, we could work with the National Park Service to provide that at the facility as well. So, hopefully, we would never have to do that, but I think there's an avenue to go down that route if we need to.
And I think that the playground equipment that we're purchasing, the useful life on that equipment probably runs pretty concurrent with the 25-year, so, just again, for the record, to say why we're comfortable with that covenant, and so, I just like to put it in the record, because it's 20 years later, or 25 years later, somebody's looking, what happened here, so.
Right.
I think it's a, a consistent useful life to accept the covenant.
Yeah, John, Supervisor, Supervisor, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jen, I want to compliment you, I'm putting together this cobbled-together funding, because it's not exactly, it's a little different way to approach it, and, and that's great. Also, I want to thank you for the benches, I don't think we've had an opportunity to talk, at least in public, about this, and the benches out at Sono Park, and finally, I dropped by the foundation, Supervisor Bagwell was there yesterday, and they were talking about Dog Park thing, so, I assume you're in good communication with the foundation on, on those ideas, so, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Well, we've been looking at Roscoe Park for probably four years now, so, you know, and, you know, I, I'm sure the other board members do, too, getting some questions about, you know, why aren't we fixing up Roscoe Park, and I've also gotten questions about, you know, ADA accessibility in that park, so, good move, let's see if we can get it moved on and get it done, okay? All right. Let's do, anybody else want to public comment on this one? Anybody? I don't see anybody, okay, so, we ready for motion? Motion's in order.
Okay, I move to accept a $261,657 Land and Water Conservation Fund grant with the required match, as project number P.17A.P.00160/32-00349, for the design and construction of a universally accessible playground and site improvements at Roscoe Park.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second on a motion discussion.
Aye.
Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. How's that working out there? Everybody see that on the screen?
We got it.
All right, all right. Okay, let's take up item 17. This is our 9/11 service and potential surcharge. We've been through first reading, anybody, any changes on second reading? Anybody?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, no changes.
You know, this is one where, you know, legislature tells us what to do on body cameras and, and things like that, and they make it, they say, okay, local government, you bite the bullet on these things, I mean, no pun intended. And so, this is, this is moving the, actually, you know, for, for most of us, it's moving the, the 9, the surcharge, the 911 surcharge from 25 cents to a dollar, but it's designed to help defray the cost of body cameras and archiving data from body, body cameras, which is not a cheap thing to do. So, anybody want to weigh in on this on second reading? I don't see any board members, we okay with this? All right, Supervisor Bagwell.
Ordinance number?
Order.
I move to adopt on second reading, bill number 122, ordinance number 2017-20, and ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.05, surcharge for enhancement or improvement of telephone system used for reporting emergencies, with an estimated revenue increase of $645,000 for fiscal year of 2019.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried unanimously. Thanks to our 911 Surcharge Committee, and thanks to you, Sheriff, for shepherding this through. All right, I think we'll take a, a break right now, we'll be, there's, there's, maybe we don't have an applicant here today on the rack, so let's just be, we got some time, let's take a break for about five or 10 minutes, and then come back, and let me see what's going on in rack here, okay? Yeah, Mike, are you, are you here for the hospital? Yeah, Mike, are you, are you here for the hospital? We're gonna reset the phone, come on.
We're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. You know, we've been talking, we thought the agenda this morning could go quite a bit longer, but just sometimes you can't gauge all these things. So, our next item is an appointment to the Carson City City Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee. We had one individual drop out, and the second individual who'd applied, we haven't heard back. So, we're just going to take that off the agenda right now. We'll go to Board of Supervisors Action, and then when we get through with that, we'll have an attorney-client meeting with our lawyers. All right. So, let's see, anybody on Board of Supervisor stuff?
I just want to mention that on Tuesday, September 26th, we're going to have a ribbon cutting up at, near the cancer center, up on the Carson Tahoe campus. The Greenhouse Project and Carson Tahoe Hospital have collaborated on a hoop house. And the project, the produce that's grown inside that hoop house will benefit the Meals on Wheels program for our seniors. So, everyone's welcome at 11 o'clock.
Anybody else? A couple of things. One, I'm going to be in Winnemucca next week, starting Monday night through Thursday morning with the NACO conference. So, I'll be up there, and I think the city manager's going to join me for a while up there. Second, on October 1st, that's a Sunday, at noon, there will be a ceremony that's entitled, "Take Me Home Huey," where there will be a Huey helicopter that's been redecorated. One that was shot down in Vietnam, and some of the crew survived. The crew, some of the crew members, I think, will be here. Is that right? Yeah. And then we'll have a film, a documentary on that. And I know everybody's watching, at least I think, and I hope everybody's watching or trying to watch, you know, the PBS documentary on Vietnam. So, all right, city manager, I hit that right?
Yes, sir. So, it's going to be 12:00 noon, right here in the parking lot, just east of where we are right now. Sunday, October 1st, 12:00 noon, right in the parking lot, next to the community center, just east of the building here. We're going to have, the Huey will be on display. There will be a short ceremony that'll begin at noon. Mayor Kroll is going to be the keynote. We'll have the local Vietnam Veterans of America chapter who are sponsoring it. The artist who did a lot of the work on the helicopter, as well as some of the veteran organizations that have chipped in and provided some of the support and some of the funding for that project. So, 12:00 noon, Sunday, October 1st, ceremony, an opportunity to actually, you know, kind of look and interact with the helicopter. And then immediately following that, we're going to do a screening of the film here in the Bob Boldrick Theater, probably around the 12:45 timeframe, give or take. I mean, we're going to see, you know, what the crowd, how many people show up and, you know, but give or take, it's going to be about 12:45. We'll do a screening of the film. It's a very well-done film. I think I have a very high threshold for believability and for, frankly, for, you know, how effective some of these films about the Vietnam War are. I mean, I'm not a Vietnam vet, but I think I have a pretty high threshold for, you know, for the quality of it. And I think the film they did is absolutely superb. So, I think everyone is going to enjoy it. No charge, totally free. So, I really recommend people come out and join in, welcome all the Vietnam veterans home, and I think it'll be a great day.
I do have something. I'm going to be working with Nick and some staff and someone else in the room's wife to try to put together a flag retirement ceremony that the city can do with about 2,000 flags in the bins that we have at City Hall and things like that. So, we're trying to-
There are 2,000 flags?
We have 2,000 retired flags that we've collected from the bins. And so, what we'd like to do is a special ceremony for the city to, and then other residents could bring more, but we can fold them in triangles and create a piece of art for a moment in time, and then do an appropriate flag retirement ceremony at the city. So, we're looking to put that together.
That's a wonderful idea. That's good. My hat's off, I know Woody's back there, his daughter is kind of the catalyst for doing this through-
It was Chloe's project.
DAV, yeah, yeah.
I think his garage has a lot of those swags. That's where I drop them off. Yeah.
All right. There's one other thing that's happening. I don't know if you know, but I think it's this weekend, on Saturday or Sunday, the Sutro Tunnel Restoration Project is having an open house. And it costs, there's an entrance fee there, but you have to be able to walk a mile. And I think what they're going to do is take us up into the tunnel, and, you know, they're trying to restore that area out there. So, if you're interested, go on their website, it's called Sutro Tunnel Restoration Project, and see. It could be an interesting way to look at something we've all seen, you know, from the outside. So, anyway, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If we can, I'd like to ask Supervisor Bagwell to do a quick recap of yesterday's foundation, Parks and Rec Foundation, on the dog park thing, because I dropped in, but I had to leave. So, can you do that? Or can she do it?
It's just discussion?
Yeah.
Sure. So, the Park Foundation is a nonprofit that has formed to try and provide assistance for our parks, trails, areas in Carson City. And we have some funding available to deal with enhancing activities for dog parks. And so, we're looking to decide if that will be the Park Foundation's project for this next year. And so, we're looking to maybe match some other people, things like that. But the city has about 64,000 in dog park needs that have been identified. And so, the foundation's going to see what we can do to try to help the city meet the dog park, like putting water for the animals in Sonoma Park. Some more benches that people have mentioned, things like that. So, we look forward to being a good partner with the city.
And also, October 1st, there will be a new change in the VNT Railroad Board. So, we'll be putting in, this board has to appoint another member to the VNT Railroad Commission. So, we'll have that up for discussion and decision on the October 5th agenda.
We've got one more, sorry.
Yeah, go.
Got one more. And don't forget this weekend, Parks and Recreation's first community garage sale is this Saturday here. And I know they already have about, I think they said 25 that have signed up to be garage sale here, and another 20 or 25 that did the interactive map. So, Saturday should be a good community clean day, and have some fun at all the garage sales.
You're going to see me there. You're going to see me there.
There you go.
I like garage sales.
They're fun.
They're fun. All right. Anybody got anything else? City manager, are we okay? All right. All right, then, we're going to be in recess until 1:30. And we're now going to close the hearing for a non-meeting meeting with our attorneys for an attorney-client discussion. So, we're in recess till 1:30.
Probably a lawyer, non-meeting meeting.